Yeah, but I think we have to really go see it in person.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's on the side of a hill.
Yeah, it's very, it's all hilly on Walker Road. It's all a hill.
Yeah.
We looked at a house on Walker Road.
All right, so are we good if I start this?
I'm fine. Are you ready Stella?
Yeah, I've started.
Yes, are they here?
Yeah, we have a corner.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Town of Beekman zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, November 5th, 2025. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please note the exits, emergency exits, one down here, one in the middle, and the one at the other end of the hallway. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending this evening. We have one item on the agenda. This is for the Stanky pole barn. It's an area variance 15 Walker Road, grid number 6759-00-100442. It's zoned R90. The applicant is requesting relief for 4,802 square feet as the required square footage exceeds 25% of the principal structure, which would be 478 square feet. The applicant is requesting an area variance. Structure is 60 by 88. Additionally, the applicant is requesting relief of approximately 20 feet due to elevations as the required height exceeds the height of the principal structure, but under the 35 feet maximum. So there's a height variance request as well. Oh, do we have that? Okay. Oh, I didn't have that on my agenda. Oh, review minutes. I got it. Okay. No, no, no problem. Do we have them? Okay. All right, I'll pull them up and then move on. We can do that at the end. Okay, so can I invite whoever's here for the application to step up, please?
Mr. Chairman, before you take, proceed any further, you might want to just inquire and make sure that the regularity of all notices required under the code have been met with respect to mailings and publication.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, and those were submitted?
Yes.
Great, okay.
They were timely filed.
Great.
You have the certified mail?
Yep.
Very perfect. So that will be part of the record.
Yeah.
Okay, for this proceeding. So this is a area variance, which is a type 2 action under super. So the floor is yours. You know, I would, you might want to just have an overview by this applicant of what he's seeking and make inquiry and then open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Sir, if you could just state your name, please?
Sure. My name is Edward Stanky. I live at 15 Walker Road.
Okay.
Town of Beekman.
All right.
So excuse me, I have a property at 15 Walker Road, Town of Beekman.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much. So I'd like to open the public hearing. Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So sir, if you could just take us through your application where you lay out the, so actually, if I could just start with, if you could just describe for us for a second, just so we can get oriented, what it is generally that you're seeking to do here?
Sure, absolutely.
Please.
Would it be okay? I actually brought some extra illustrations.
Please.
With me, if I could pass them off to anybody.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Stanky.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is this what's in it?
He's going.
This is what's in. Now, I know that, um, pardon me for listening in on what you were talking about, that you had mentioned 4,800 square feet?
So the, what we understand as the required variance is 4,802 square feet because...
You subtract what, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I misunderstood.
So if you could just give us a quick overview of what it is that you're looking to do here?
Okay. Basically, if you don't mind, I actually prepared something.
Oh, fantastic.
I tried to memorize it, but I'm not that good. Forgive me. I own a 16, a 17.6 acre lot with a 1,912 square foot home on Walker Road. I'm requesting an area and height variance for the construction of a 5,200 square foot pole barn, meaning exterior dimensions, which is higher and larger than the existing home, for the storage of my boat with a trailer, an RV, a tractor with seven attachments, and a space for personal woodworking and stained glass hobby workspace, which is for my wife, and associated equipment. I have bought a sample layout drawing, which I provided for you, with measurements showing the size and space occupancy of the equipment that I possess, which is what I use to determine the size of the pole barn. To safely clear entry for the boat and the RV, I need a 14-foot overhead door to be able to gain access to put that inside the building, which will make the ridge height 26 feet, which is width of 412 pitch roof. This is below the max zoning allowable of 35 feet, as you said, but it is taller than the existing home. The proposed pole barn location was selected because of its ability to minimize the visual impact on the neighborhood by the distance and natural cover of the property itself and the surrounding areas. Now, it stated on a map that I had provided off the Texas County parcel, I made an illustration of the distance distances of the proposed site to various roads and other homes. It's 750 feet from Route 55, 610 feet from the closest point of Walker Road. It is 480 feet from the closest visible neighbor, which is at 21 Walker Road, which happens to be Sissy's house, and 620 feet from the next closest neighbor at 27 Walker Road. It also shielded by natural wooded area and has over 100 feet of elevation difference higher from the neighbors, and 140 feet difference higher to the Walker Road, and 60 feet higher to Route 55. So it's basically up and way back in the woods, and it's behind the primary home. It's also, it's almost impossible to see my existing home from the street when you drive by. You would have to be looking for it. I mean, you'll see the driveway, obviously, but if you were to look up the driveway, you don't see anything but a large wood pile. In the warmer months, in other words, after spring and the trees blossom, not seeing. Sissy may see it because she's the closest neighbor that I have, and either, you know, the guy next door, if he's looking in between all the trees and the leaves and whatnot. But I mean, pretty much, you know, that's it. So, and it's also, well, because of the woods and the shrubbery from either room, you can't see it. I plan on, you know, if being able to put up this building, to put six feet of evergreen treeing on the house and neighbor's side of the property that's facing them, to help in, I guess, what do you want to call it, camouflaging the building view. And I will, there'll be no exterior lighting installed, other than downward facing, right at like local areas, right in front of the building, and there will be motion detected. The structure will have no water or sewer connection, and it is solely intended for personal storage and hobby workshop use, no commercial usage, no livestock, no poultry or agricultural purposes. I have brought signed and notarized deed restriction covenant, which I will file with the county clerk upon approval of my application, if you so wish. I enclosed, I believe, a copy in those packets also. I'm open for any questions and recommendations. Thank you for my opportunity. Fire away.
Could I just ask one question that I didn't see in the submission? What will the floor be?
It will be a concrete slab to support, I believe, six inch to support the weight of...
Got it.
The boat and the RV are the heaviest.
And will it be the footprint of the structure? Will it extend beyond that, or?
The only extensions would be aprons, just on the overhead doors, and maybe, you know, a small, where you stand in front of the side doors. In my original application, I'm assuming you have that, the very original quote that I had gotten showed the doors as being white, which isn't what I wanted. I wanted them to be in the extra photos that I provided in my application, where they're brown, the green, the building itself is a forest green, and the bottom wainscoting is actually stone. Of course, it's not actual stone, but it's faux stone wainscoting. So I'm trying to, you know, consciously blend in with the environment. To be quite honest with you, you know, I'm actually trying, if you look at the way it's said on the survey, is I'm trying to even set it further away from my own house, so that when I'm on the patio, I don't really see it, which is the other reason for the large evergreens. Because the number one reason I actually purchased that property was because of the property itself. You know, it's an escape from my day to day. It has been since I've owned it. My wife enjoys it immensely, and we spend as much free time there as we possibly can. We've been clearing the property since we bought it. I mean, when we got it, it was abandoned. It was, you know, not taken care of, and the property was so overgrown. I've got, I think, at this point now, four huge piles of just dead stuff that fell down and was all over the place. Along my driveway, as you go up my driveway, I built a fence, if you want to call it that, out of cedar locks, from all the dead cedars that were just laying on the ground. I put that up for two reasons. I wanted fencing, and the reason I wanted fencing was because of my neighbor, was I'm thinking, when I come out, because I'm in there and out of there a lot, she doesn't know why I've been, this is what I'm telling you why, but when I come down the driveway with my headlights on, they beam right at her house, right? So I was going to put up a fence, but then I didn't want to put up just like the thing you buy at Home Depot, right? So I wanted to keep with the aesthetic of the neighborhood. And that's what I did, you know? And the more I accumulate as I'm clearing up, I'm adding to the fence, just to keep in line, you know, with that thought. And I think it looks pretty cool. It looks like a huge stacked pile of wood that most people have.
Could I clarify one thing? When did you purchase this property?
2012.
2012?
I'm not exactly sure of the month, to be honest with you.
You mentioned there is a house there.
Yes.
What's the square footage again?
1,912.
1,912.
It's basically a single story with a full basement, and the basement has a two-car garage.
With a basement, okay.
Where do you keep all the stuff?
Some of the stuff that's on that is on the property. All the tractor and all the implements are there. One of the trailers is there. The lawn mowers, the small riding mowers and their attachments are in my stuffed in my garage. My cabot is in the garage, so there's...
So right now?
So right now, any cars, anytime I'm there, the car's staying outside.
So your RV is out in the open? It's not covered?
Well, the RV right now is not at the property because it's kind of big, and there's no place to really put it on the driveway.
And so, and I'm assuming the boat also is not there?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, I have leased space where I have the equipment trailer, my scissor lift that I use for do cleaning the gutters. And I don't do well on ladders, so I bought the used lift many years ago. And I use that to go up and down, and, you know, I feel more comfortable that way. And I have an equipment trailer for moving that, and my tractor and the Kubota around, you know, for, you know, service, or, you know, if there's a problem. So I have this trailer for moving it around, but I don't use it a lot, you know? And right now, I have it stored someplace else because I don't want to put it on my property.
Yeah.
I have one trailer that's there now. It's the small dirt trailer, I call it. And I use that, you know, I bought that specifically for moving dirt, debris in large quantity. I can load it with my own loader and then, you know, tow it down to wherever I'm going to dump it and, you know, and use it for that. But I, you know, I basically have everything in possession in some way, shape, or form of what you see on there now.
Can I just show you something real quick?
Sure.
Just ask a question. So this is a piece, this is a picture of the property. There is a house right there.
You have to zoom on, you know, it's...
I can't.
No, you can't.
Oh, yeah, I can.
It's very hard to see from the...
Is that it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's pretty much on the map.
Right there?
Yes.
That's it.
And this is going behind it. If you look at the property, the property has a point. It's on the side of the point. And I believe on the map, there's...
Is that the factory house right there? It's going back to it?
It's going right back. Right. I would say, I think it's within 50 feet of the house, behind the house.
Is it taller than the house?
Yes.
It will. It will. Well, the property?
The new structure.
The structure will definitely be tall, yes. It's going to be 26 to the ridge. In my drawings, in my quote, I put a copula on it, but I can take them down if that, because I didn't measure to the height of the copula. I think it's 30 feet more.
Yes.
But it wasn't important to me. It doesn't really serve a purpose, other than it could be venting, but I could use a ridge vent to do that, same thing. And I think it makes it look more farmy, you know, rural, you know, thing with the windmill with the, you know, with the rooster on top of it, you know? Again, just trying to stay with the aesthetic of, you know, it's not an industrial building. You know, I'm trying to make it look as much of like a real barn as I can. I mean, other than actually having it sided like a barn with, you know, wood and all that, which would really drive the cost up, you know, for, you know, in my opinion, wouldn't be necessary, providing I believe that I'm accomplishing my goals with the metal cladding and the colors scheme that's laid out there. One thing I wanted to just clarify, you listed on your application, your address as 31 Coulter Avenue.
Right, that's my original home. I own two properties.
You own that one, I see. And is that, are one of these your primary residence?
That one is my primary.
That's your primary.
For the moment, which, see, this is all, this is all accumulating because my status is due to change within the year, okay? I'm looking to retire and, you know, tuck away in the woods and live out, you know, whatever years I have left, you know?
Right, right.
So, you know, on that front, I had, we, excuse me, I should say we, because my wife was involved in all of this. We had plans on doing that much sooner, and that was going to be our day, you know, Walker Road was going to be our day to day. But there were family things that occurred, and the deal fell through. And it was just, you know, it wasn't something that I needed to do. And at the same time, I wanted to clear up the property. I had to do some work, you know, in the house. I had to clear out some, you know, junk and garbage and, you know, necessary repairs to make it that it is habitable. But, you know, I'm not occupying it, other than whenever I take time to go there, you know, like I said, I spend as much time as I can there.
So this, this property, the, at this address, Walker Road?
Right.
You, the house has been vacant?
Nobody is living in it full time, yes, if that's considered vacant.
And you're not renting it, or?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I see. Okay.
No, I'm not, I'm not interested in any of that, you know, the, you know. Anything that I possess is usually for my own use or for family use, you know? And it didn't work out, and I ended up just, you know, staying where I was at because it was just easier. Your commute to work is a little less, not by much, you know, but it's there, it's easy. I'm established, basically, you know, to move and do all that, and then let that house sit in the village empty. I don't know, I felt more uncomfortable doing that than this house. Because I know I've got Sissy as a neighbor, and nobody's going to go up there and mess around on that property, so.
Got it.
At least, at least that's what Marty told me when he was around, God rest his soul, her ladyhood.
My lady rest in peace, Marty. Yes, three years ago.
I'm sorry. Okay, I was going to take us through the criteria in the application.
Okay.
So sir, if you could just take us through, in your application, the five criteria that lay out, the five questions related to the scope of the variance that you're requesting?
I did all that. Okay. I'm assuming you want me to respond to the first question?
Yes, if you could just read through what you...
Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting the variance? I do not believe, though, that the neighborhood character would be affected. Existing homes cannot be seen by the majority of neighbors nor from Walker Road 55. The proposed pole barn, with the choice of natural blending colors, is located behind the home in sight hindered by trees, shrubs, vegetation, as well as elevation of the property. Basically what I said in my, in my meeting. Can you, that, next, should I just read the next one, or?
Well, just one question before we move on.
Sure.
Did I understand you to say that you have trees between your, the home there on the site and where you plan to put the structure, or is it cleared right now?
There are some, but where there needs to be, there will be put.
Oh, I see. You're planning to plant trees?
Right, between the house and the structure.
Got it.
And the structure and the, I guess, if you want to call it left side neighboring side of the structure.
Got it.
Basically facing Sissy's house and the next door neighbor to her.
Okay, you can, please, go ahead.
Okay. I believe in this answer to this question on the application, I was referring to just all the trees in general on the property, and on her property and other neighboring properties. Okay, number two, can desired result be achieved by some other means other than granting a variance? Now, okay, my answer is possibly, but the desired result would be a site located a significant distance from the property and unsustainable and unbearable financial cost. What that means is basically, like I said, I'm changing, my life is changing. I'm going to be on the property 24/7, and that's where I want to stay, and that's what I want to do. And I don't want to commute to an off-site location someplace. And the reason this is being facilitated, as I'm calling it rapidly as I am, is because the cost for where I'm renting now, I wouldn't be able to pay if I was no longer working, because at that point, I'm going to be living off of my, you know, savings and then eventually social security. So that was the reason for that answer. Now, exactly what the question means from your, excuse me, your legal perspective, I wasn't, I'm not really 100% sure, but that was my understanding of the question. As I was also a little confused about substantial question, which is the next one, is the variance substantial, you know? Yeah, I guess, right? Because, you know, it is much larger than the house. But the size of the property, I feel it fits well and will not appear out of place because of the style or type of house, or I'm sorry, structure that I'm putting up. Any, continue?
Mr. Chairman, so what the board's being asked to do is to grant an area variance that's over 1,000% of what the allowable standard before this, under our code.
Right.
Okay?
That's substantial.
That's quite substantial, no doubt, but...
It's greater than anything I've ever seen.
Yeah.
So the legal standard for this particular, for your consideration, is you are, the ZBA is, it must ensure that it approves the minimum variance deemed necessary and adequate, while also preserving the character of the neighborhood and safeguarding the health, safety, and welfare of the community. All right? And that is for your consideration. So that, those are going to be questions you may want to expound upon in this record.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
May I add something to that?
Absolutely, you talk to the board.
With that in mind, although it is, you know, large, and I didn't do the math if it is 1,000%, but I do know it is, it's quite large, and I understand that. But in comparison to the size of the property, it's less than 7% of the area of the property. And what makes that awfully clear is when you look at the survey map, if you open up the full-size one, it's erroneous.
Right.
You know, and again, I'm just feeling that when you're thinking of the character of the neighborhood, and I totally agree, you certainly don't want some big, huge thing in the village of Beekman on a quarter acre lot. Fair enough. I'm feeling that it's out of sight, you know? And if only, right now, these two people here are the only people besides yourselves that even know it's going to exist. Unless they decide to come up to the house, that's when they will definitely know that it's there. So I just ask you for, you know, that consideration as well, is that it's not intended to offend anyone. It's not intended to be ugly or, you know, whatever. And, you know, as I said, I'm open to any suggestions that would help me get to where I want to get. And, you know, because I realize that you don't have to do this. You can say, law's the law, and that's the end of that. And I do appreciate that.
And as counsel advised us, what our role is to try to understand what you're trying to accomplish and see how that conforms with the town code. And to the extent that you're asking for a variance outside of what is contemplated by the town code, that what the variance that we grant is as limited as possible, given the needs of the applicant and the, you know, the, what's set out in the town code. So, and I guess, as I was reviewing your application, so one of the things I did, because I found this really neat, this pole barn that you're looking to erect here, so I went on the company's website that builds these.
Right.
And it struck me that this is one of the largest pole barns they build. It's the widest pole barn they build, and it's...
I believe 60 feet is max in the industry, I think.
Yes, and it's just shy of the longest pole barn they build. I think there was one pole barn that was bigger in terms of what they had on their website. So I guess, you know, it would...
If I may?
Please.
There are plenty of... There are plenty of companies that build pole barns. I'd like to just let you know that indoor riding arenas are pole barns.
Sure.
And they are a clear span and some are larger than 60 feet.
Absolutely.
So I, I understand it may be the largest that this particular company grows.
Yes.
And the reason I picked 60-foot wide was A, I didn't wanna make it long, because then I feel, I wanted to try to make it as square.
Right.
You know, and, and as small as possible, right, without, you know, going, excuse me, 100 feet or, you know, or more. You're like, narrow it up, make it 30 feet, but then you'd end up making it so much more. You know, basically, it's a square-footage number, um, which is how I came to that number, so then I took that number and tried to make it as small as I could.
Yeah, so you, you also might wanna consider this particular, um, property where it's situated on Route 55, on this side of Route 55 where the applicant lives, there's large tracts of land, okay? In fact, Mr. Stanky, I believe...
I own two more lots.
Three, uh, two other contiguous lots that are nine, 10 acres each, all right?
In addition to the land?
But across the street are subdivisions. So half-acre maybe subdivisions and in the rear of his lot on Walker Road are also, um, smaller tracts of land with, with homes on it.
Oh, on the other side of 55?
Uh, uh, Walker Road.
Directly behind the house. Up, up, up off of, what is that, Starlight, I believe is up on top.
Okay, oh, so you own something up there?
Not on Starlight, but the three lots that I do own go further up the hilth than my house does.
Between Starlight and Coon Den.
Also, that is the steepest part of the slope or...
That is.
The ridge, I guess. Um, the two, the, the other two lots are part of Hunter's Ridge subdivision from back in the 60s, so there is maps of those properties and it kinda shows how they go up, but it doesn't show this property on that, 'cause that wasn't part of the subdivision. This house was built, um, this property was built, uh, I believe, 55, if my memory serves correctly.
It was the Zimmer Estate, the jeweler in Poughkeepsie, that probably owned it.
I, I guess what I'm saying by it being very steep is that even the property owners that are above me aren't really gonna be able to build close to my property lines, that I think that that building's in sight would be an issue. Because it's so steep, you would be building something that would be similar to a Swiss Alps ski house or something, because you would be on stilts.
Coon Den is off of, off of...
Coon Den?
Coon Den is off of Walker, isn't it?
Yes, half of it is and the other half comes back out on Beekman Road.
Oh, and the other half, okay, that's the other half I'm thinking of.
And the old Coon Den road which extends from Walker Road is on my property.
Okay.
It's the side of a hill, though.
But it's abandoned at this point.
It's locust-steep.
And I believe it's in the deed as mine now.
It's very steep.
But he's putting it below, so...
Yeah, 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 no one's going up there behind it.
Nobody's gonna be building behind there.
Yeah.
No?
I mean, they can't.
Only up on the, on the flat, up, I, you know, where Starlight is.
Which...
I've been up there a few times, 'cause my dog got, got, ran away and we had to trek up that hill and I got to the point where I couldn't do it, my wife made it up the hill, I had to get in the car and drive around Starlight and go up, 'cause I couldn't do it.
I know Starlight...
It was just way too steep.
Isn't on Starlight, there's a big, big house at the very top.
Yeah, right, yep.
Yeah.
Very big, big, I think it's been in this pole barn.
It's a, it's a very big house.
And it's multi-story also.
Yeah.
Um, but if you go, if you go past that house and you continue, it, I, I don't wanna say it dead-ends, it just stops.
It, it, yeah, it's like a dead end.
And then it's, it's just woods.
Yeah.
At that point.
Yeah.
So, just to these points that we're on right now, particularly number three, about how substantial the variance is, so, um, as I was looking at the size of this pole barn and just trying to understand the scale, um, obviously, you know, if, if you were building a, a structure that was 478 square feet, then you wouldn't need a variance for that.
Correct.
Because that would be, uh, within the, the boundaries of the town code. So we're here because the structure you're seeking to build is, uh, larger than 478 square feet.
Right.
And so in terms of how substantial the variance is, could you share with us a little bit your thought process, you know, beyond 478 square feet, what made you arrive at 5,200? I mean...
That, that illustration, basically, those are my possessions.
I see, so you took everything...
Those are the things that are coming with me, that, if, if they're not already there. So what am I to do with them? I can't keep them where they are for, you know, after the next year. Uh, the, the term runs out, uh, and, and I have them in multiple spots and, you know, the renewal costs, there's, I, I couldn't afford to pay what I pay right now, the only reason I can pay is because I have a very good job and I, I'm not bragging, I'm just, you know, and I, I have no children, so I was able to save a lot of money, you know, and I invested it and I, you know, and I worked very hard. Um, and, you know, this, I'm 62, so in my opinion, that's early retirement, considering some of the people that I meet in my day-to-day who are much older than me still working. Uh, so, um, all of, all of the things that I possess will be with me and I want them in my home and I feel I can secure them better and I can use them. Uh, and so what I did was, I, I, I just rounded a number and I started at 6,000 square feet, right, basically a 60 by 100, and then when I plopped it on my little home version of a map, I'm like, that's, that's way too long, it goes too far up the hill, it's gonna look at a place, it's gonna take an awful lot of extra excavate, you know, and, and drive the costs up, okay? And then when I started placing it, okay, and I'm saying to myself, yes, I would like to have nice aisleways, like, you know, three feet between, you know, either shelves and the boat and shelves and the RV and, you know, a certain amount of, of circulation room, you know, it, 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 it started to stay, you know, closer to, you know, 5,500 and up. So what I tried to do with that illustration was I squeezed them together. I showed the implements laid out in the building so that I can access them with the machine. Um, I can double-stack a couple of the implements because the loader bucket goes up and down, so I can stack them, but only too high, because they're fairly large and they're extremely heavy. So I'd be relying on the machine to pick them up and put them down, but it doesn't gain me much, you know, more, you know, free square footage than I could take off the overall size. I think, um, after I did the math, it's, it's, it's roughly 64 square feet by stacking, you know, two of the implements on top of some of the other ones. The other ones, you know, one of them's a chipper, one of them's a, a, a large brush hog, you know, they're very large and extremely heavy and to put that up on a rack, uh, and they're tall, except for the brush hog, I would be stacking two buckets on top of the brush hog, because it's loaded to ground, but the backhoe and the chipper are tall, so I'd have to make, I would have to make a stand that's almost six foot tall, um, you know, to clear. The backhoe, forget it, it's even taller than that, but the, the, the chipper, you know, with the, the chutes and the shrouding, is almost six foot tall, I would have to put a rack that high. So now you're gonna pick up a 300-pound implement and put it six feet in the air. Yeah, if I use the, the tractor to do the actual labor of it, that's okay, but there's always a possibility of something falling and hitting it, knocking it off and then hurting my wife, God forbid, I'll never hit the end of it, you know, or, or damage the building itself, you know, uh, because if you look on the picture, how I put them around there, um, they're close to the exterior wall, uh, interior, exterior wall. Um, and that size weight at that height would certainly go through it. I mean, we're not talking like, you know, this isn't built, you know, this isn't a concrete building or something like that, you know, so, you know, the opportunity to stack is there, but it doesn't gain any, really any more substantial square footage. Um, and I tried to make everything as tight as possible, if you, if you look on, on the...
I think you need, you need to find out about the neighborhood and if there are any large accessory structures in, in the surrounding areas and surrounding lots that are like this one.
I passed a hu, I passed a huge one coming here, right on the hill there, before you turned down seven.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think...
I understand that's a farm, but...
For my part...
It doesn't have any coverage.
I, I think I have to go out there and see it and I, I was hoping to do that prior to this meeting, but I didn't have the opportunity to do that. Um, and that would be my recommendation, is, is that we, we go out there.
Well, before you do that, why don't you hear what's...
Yeah, no, absolutely, well, I wanna get through the remaining, um, items, so, sorry, sir, if we could just take us through the last two points here.
These are all the other, all the other people around his property, correct?
Right, right.
Look at the size of their lots as opposed to his, they can't have a structure that big. You have to actually ask questions rather than make comment.
No, I'm just saying, 'cause the property that surrounds his property would never be able to hold a structure that big.
But unfortunately, the, the challenge is that the, the variance is not related to the size of the property, it's related to the size of the primary structure.
The primary residence.
The primary house.
If, if there was a very large primary house there, then, but anyway...
When was that house built?
1955.
Yeah. I, I do remember some time ago that there was a similar situation, uh, maybe a little bit smaller scale, and we did ask the applicant to make some adjustment to, um, because there was also a, a substantial, um, difference with measurements like that and, uh, the applicant did work it out that way. Um, I'm not saying that, you know, you need to do that at this point, but what I'm saying is that...
I'm, I'm here to, to be cooperative, I have no problem, depending, you know, depending on what it is, obviously.
Right, I mean, it is substantial.
It is, it is what it is, right, that's what everybody says.
And if you, you know, um...
Oh, okay, if, sorry, if you could take us through the last two points and then, yes, please.
Okay, well, uh, number four, correct? Will the variance have an adverse effect of, of impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? Um, I said no, the natural topography, along with the existing trees and vegetation, will make the proposed pole barn difficult to see and naturally facilitates rainwater, uh, soil absorption. Basically, um, what I mean by that is, 'cause I'm assuming that the concern is about the environment and the only problem that this does to the environment, um, is, I guess, I don't wanna say it creates the rainwater, although that was a question on the environmental study and that kinda had my brain a little frowned up, but basically, it, it concentrates the rainwater, um, you know, into the gutters and then down to downspouts, but just as my house does, it basically goes into the ground and it finds its way down, you know, uh, what is it, 140 feet, you know, to the lowest-lying part of my property and I don't think it ever makes it there. Um, and the, 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 the way it's situated, none of that water will, um, join any of, any of the rainwater that comes down my driveway right now. Like when we get heavy downpours, you know, I get, I get water off the hill, I get water that runs down the driveway and at times it's, it comes down pretty quick and there's a large volume. Um, but this will be going in the opposite direction, towards my other, you know, vacant lot, um, but it doesn't cross into that lot. It basically goes around the house and then down the hill.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done both sides of the house, it's only going around the house on the one side.
Is that side or is it north?
Uh, I'm gonna have to say, I believe it's north, the, the, the Poughkeepsie side. Okay.
Was this advertised? Because I don't see any...
Yeah, we have, yeah. Um, okay, did you have any questions, Chris?
Um, no, just, just the height, um, and I, thank you, Greg, I did want to know the, the ratio that we were looking at, to see how substantial it was.
I think, I thought it was 1,100%.
Think about it, is it maybe...
Yeah, okay.
I, I, I believe it's more along those lines.
Yeah.
I, I didn't write that part down, 'cause I was just, I guess it would make me look bad, right? 1,000%, oh my God, what a number.
Well, I, I think, I just wanted to clarify one thing with counsel, when we consider, so there's, there's two components, two variances, the one that is related to the height, uh, exceeding the height of the main structure, so, uh, well, first of all, I don't think we have the height of the main structure, do, do we have that on?
It's, it's, it's rough, you know, to the, to the highest point of, of the, I have a vaulted roof, right, it's like this, so to this point inside the house, it's 12 feet. So think, the thickness of the roof, eight inches, so let's call it 13 feet if you want.
So I think we would need that on a drawing where we, we, you know, an architect would let us know the exact measurement, because one of the, one of the variances is related to the height of the main structure and we would need to know exactly what the height of the main structure is. So that, that's something that, uh, if you could provide that to us from an architect that is giving us the exact...
So I have to have somebody come out and actually measure it?
No, not really, but, maybe you can explain to the board why, the lay of the land, basically, and why that, that particular roof line is going to be so much, um, you know, higher than your existing roof line with your main structure.
I, I have the answer. The answer is, is that when I originally approached, um, Jessica Peterson about, when I inquired about doing this and I said, because I had no idea what to do or how to go about this, so I went in there for a little instruction and she was very helpful, she opened up my property right there, you know, in front of me and I told her, you know, the size of the property and she said, she says, nope, you, you're, that, that's gonna be a problem, you're gonna need a variance because you can't have it more than 25% of primary structure. Um, so then I showed her on the map where I wanted to put it and where I wanted to put it was at the lowest-lying, flattest part of the property. She says, well, you really can't do that either, because that's in front of the primary residence, right? So, but it's, it's, you know, a, a few hundred feet away.
Right.
But, you know, again, so I need a height variance because it's, and, and I still have the height variance problem, it's still physically taller than the existing primary bu, uh, house, but the house is also sitting, you know, 140 feet higher than, than where the building would be. So I mean, either way, I can't escape the height, but I can certainly escape, you know, i, 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 in relationship to the house and being so much higher, because now, the building itself is gonna be on a piece of the property that is higher than the, the, the lot of the house itself.
So the relevant section of the code deals with, um, respecting the scale and character of the principal structure and it says that the accessory shall not exceed 25% of the principal structure involved, which we've already, you know, discussed, but the second component with respect to the height says that it shall not exceed the height of the principal structure, okay? So now the board can make inquiry as to other areas of this lot, this particular structure could possibly go on, all right? And keep in mind that this is a corner lot, so it, it will have, um, different, it, it has different versatility as far as interpretation under the code, because it, it fronts two different roads.
Well, I guess that was what I was confused about, the, the height of the principal structure, so, again, we don't have the exact specification, we don't have any specifications here on the height of the principal structure, but if the principal structure was 13 feet tall from the front of the structure and the applicant is seeking to erect this pole barn and the height of this pole barn is 26 feet from the front of the pole barn, is that a 13-foot variance?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
That would be a 13-foot variance, but...
Excuse me, in, in, in that scenario, are you assuming that both structures are on the same level, same plane? Does it matter that the, that the requested structure is already an extra, I don't know, 10 feet, say, above?
It's, it's a pure math problem here, I mean, it's, the code is, is pretty clear, exceed the height of the principal structure.
So you take the height of the principal structure, the height of the structure that the applicant wants to build?
Okay, so it's measured, it's measured from the building's foundation, you know, where...
Each, each building.
The physical building itself, whether it's higher on the hill or not, doesn't matter.
So if, do I understand correctly, if the pole barn was, proposed pole barn was gonna be 13 feet tall, there wouldn't be a need for a height variance?
Well, it depends, it, probably not, no, but, um, you know, you might wanna inquire as to what other areas of this particular lot, this, this pole barn could possibly go to, because that is also a consideration for yourselves in considering these factors, especially the self-created ownership.
Right.
And it's only allowed to...
Well, as far as the, I'm sorry.
No, if I understand this, basically, if both buildings were next to each other, the barn would be that much higher.
Twice the height of the house.
Correct, correct.
Right, roughly, yeah.
So it's not necessarily that it's going to be... So it's not necessarily that it's going to be placed higher to begin with.
Right.
It's if they were next to.
If they were next to each other, it would be, it would be twice as high.
And I think one of the questions that we're coming about to is, is there anywhere else, where else would you, could you possibly place the structure to begin with, other than where you have it now?
Well, it seems to me that it doesn't matter where it is because it's physically too double height. But as, as I was saying, I originally wanted to put it on the property, basically closer to the two roads, right, if you're looking at the triangular lot. I was gonna bring it down the hill to where my lot levels off just before Coonan, you know, the portion of Coonan Road, which passes my, which passes through my property, and it starts to rise at, at that Coonan Road. So there's a whole low-lying area right there, okay? And that's, that's where I wanted to put it. And the reason I wanted to originally put it there was because it was flat. So there was, you know, no, no necessary excavation to do anything to make it level. It was already level. I was just gonna need to put down the gravel base and, and, you know, for, for the, you know, for the, for the slab and, and move on.
You would still need a variance.
Again, trying to keep in with the nature of the neighborhood, by putting it there, it would have been more difficult to camouflage from the neighborhood. You, you can see it, because when you drive past that low-lying area of the property, you can see, you know, the, the embezzlement of Coonan Road, you can see the stream because the stream passes under Walker Road. You know, so I just felt I was gonna need a variance to put it in front of the house, then I was gonna need a variance for the height, you know, and, and then there was a possibility that because there is that, that stream that runs in the area, that I would, maybe I wouldn't be able to put that size building or, or a, a large building in that spot because of how much distance you would want it to be, say, from the stream. So it, there was, there was more challenges to doing that. But that was my original idea, and Jessica said that that was a bad idea. And, and, you know, so then I started thinking, well, how can I do this? Now, my second choice was I want to put it on the other lot. I was told you can't do that, because you need to have a primary building on the other lot. You can't have just an accessory building on an empty lot. Well, that kind of screws that idea up, right? So, you know, because the, actually, the other lot has a much more level ledge where it would go, you know, because I would also want it further back. And it also exposes you a little bit to 55 when you drive by, because it's so high up and the wooded area in that section of Route 55 isn't as dense as it is on Walker Road. So it, 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 it kind of, it kind of makes it more obvious, whereas I feel that the final choice was actually the best, you know, other than the stupid height. And I'm, I'm sure you had asked, if they were both 13 feet, my point would be even, if I was able to make a 13-foot-high building which was equal to my primary structure, where I put it is gonna make it higher, but you clarified that that's not what the issue is, it's just from the bottom of the building to the top of the building. But that brings the problem of being able to fit the large, you know, the boat trailer and, and, you know, and the RV, won't fit through the door. So I can't do it on a 13-foot ceiling building, no matter what the square footage. You know, if I could, I would put it all in my garage, but that's a physical impossibility. Now, is that a self-created hardship? I had a problem with the hardship question. That's why it took me so long to get the application in, and I kind of fell behind, which is why I brought this extra stuff today. Because I really didn't understand it 100%. Talking to different people and doing a little internet research, the word hardship is defined to me as, well, hardship is the fact that I can't put it in, you know, a 1,200-square-foot building, the size of what I'm trying to accomplish can't, can't be done. So that's the need for the building. So, so that's, that's the hardship. Did I create that? Well, you know, I didn't make the house that small, it was pre-existing. The answer to that would be, well, you knew it was that small when you bought it. Yeah, well, I didn't think that I was gonna be building such a large building, but things happened. And I didn't at the time know that there was a height variance and, and, and the full square footage, because of the size of the zoning, right, it's R90, you know, and I've got, you know, between, between that and the other two lots, almost 40 acres of property. I'm saying, this is, you know, this is nothing compared to, you know, the size of the area. And like I said, you know, it's seven, it's less than 7% of this particular 17-acre lot. So I, I, I didn't see it as being as grossly oversized when, in that comparison. Compared to my neighbor's house, yeah, of course. Put it on four acres, it's gonna be kind of big.
So it looks like the, the topos that were given, that were filed with the application show that the principal residence is between 538 feet and 548 feet, whereas the proposed accessory structure is going to be between 564 and 570, 580, is that correct?
580 is, is off the, the, the area where the proposed building's gonna go. That's where, that's where the ridge begins to, you know, go up sharply. But that's not where it's gonna go.
Where is it gonna go? Because there, there are.
I believe it ends at four, 56, 568 or 570. And I was also, that position is not written in stone. If that creates a problem, I can turn it 90 degrees, if that helps or, you know, makes the case better.
All right, you want to hear it?
It changes the footprint, which I wanted the narrow side facing the neighbors, but, you know, I can have it any way, you know, you think would be, you know.
Just one, one last question.
Sure.
If the board was inclined to consider a variance for a smaller structure, could you make a smaller structure work? And if so, what size could you make work?
Well, the, the thing is, is that it, as in the illustration, the smaller I make it, the tighter everything becomes. And now you have.
Understand.
A problem with damage and things of that nature.
No, I mean, you've laid out.
Unless I'm told, listen, Ed, you know what? Sell the RV, you know, and then I guess I can drop it 800 square feet, right? Because that's roughly the size of the RV.
So I guess my question would be, could you make a smaller structure work if the board was inclined to grant a variance for a smaller structure? Or is your, your representation that really what you're looking for is this size structure and a smaller structure just wouldn't work for what you're, you're trying to accomplish?
I, 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 I can't put it down as rock solid, I'm a no. I would have to say, I, I will work with you however I have to. If you say to me, Ed, you know, we're willing to give you a variance, but the building can only be 2,000 square feet, that's an inherent possibility. Even just for the tractor attachments area that I show you in that, that right there is roughly 1,200 square feet. If you look at it with the turning radius and be able to access, you know, and slot away, you know, the things there. So between that and the workshop area and its storage, that's another 12, roughly 1,200 square feet. So now you're at 2,200 square feet, and we don't address anything that's on the other half of the building. So yes, I'm willing to work with you. I'm not a hard no on anything. And I'm here to hear suggestions or, and opinions and even solutions if you have them. I'm, I'm not here to, to, to fight with anyone, I'm here to make everybody happy, I mean, all get along.
No, no, appreciate all the work that you put into preparing.
Well, I'll be honest with you, and, and this is why it is as unprepared as it is, because I wanted to get real drawings for you, okay? The building company, and he's not the only one, okay? He was the only one that was willing to give me that for money, and it was a reasonable amount of money in my opinion, okay, compared to what everyone else wanted. Everyone else wanted a sizable down payment in excess of $70,000, okay? And a commitment to the, you know, to the building with, well, if you don't get your variance, we'll return your money, okay? Now, he's a lawyer. What am I gonna have to go through in order to get that money back out of state? You know what I mean? How much is that gonna cost me? So the $70,000 I gave is gonna end up only being 30 by the time I'm done.
Understood.
So, so, you know, I'm here to see, listen, if I can meet your criteria and you say, yeah, Ed, we can do this, but you're gonna have to put up trees, you're gonna have to do this, you're gonna, we wanna see this done and that done, but the idea of doing what I'm trying to do in the realm and in the size, you know, area of, of what I'm looking for, then I have no problem moving forward and, and, and doing, you know, the, you know, again, I know I have to meet codes, I have to meet standards with stamped, signed drawings on everything, and it all has to be approved. I'm willing to go through all that and the expense if there's a possibility this can happen. If there's no possibility, then I don't want to waste any more money than I already have.
Yep.
I, I think that's, you know, a fair, reasonable outlook on it, and, you know, if I'm wrong, please, by all means, tell me.
Thank you very much.
Because I don't know, I don't know, I don't know the system here, that's basically.
Yes, absolutely.
So to answer your question, no, I am not opposed to trying to make a smaller size work, again, depending on what that size would be.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you very much.
That is, you're done.
Open it up for public comment.
Great.
All right. So.
Pick this up.
Motion to open the meeting, public comment?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
When, when somebody comes up, they ask them to put their name on there and their address.
Yes.
Okay?
So like to invite anyone that would like to step up for public comment to please step up to the podium.
That would be I?
Please.
Motion.
So if you'd please state your name and address for the.
Yes, I signed in actually on the show.
Great.
I am Sissy, nicknamed Sissy Theresa J. Rahilly, 21, Walker Road, Hopple Junction, New York, 12533, town of Beadman.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Christian.
Christian, thank you.
Christian. I've lived at my residence for 24 years, never had a problem with any of the neighbors, don't intend to now, and I don't want to keep any longer than I have to. So my question, and I beg your indulgence, can you hear me?
Yeah, you can bring the mic now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
If at all possible, since I, I guess, may have joined his property, 15 Walker, and the variance for my property to this young man's property would be how much? What is the variance I'm allowed, so no one approaches and goes over the property line? What is that setback?
So there's, my understanding is that this structure that's being proposed is not near the property line in a way that would encroach on any setbacks.
Well, I'm not sure, as far as you were mentioning the substantial variance, I'm not sure where we're headed. And in regards to on-site, which is your lot, there's, there's how much acreage on your property?
17.6.
So that's one lot, and I have it here. And what is the extra lots? Is there extra property that's adjoined to that with your lots?
A threat to your lot?
Lots. Do you have extra lots?
Yeah, the next two going towards Poughkeepsie, I don't have the exact size, one's nine and change.
I do.
That is 10, is it?
I have it, thank you. Heading towards 55M, going north, Poughkeepsie, right, westbound. So my question begs itself, when your materials are being used to build this pole barn, would it be possible that none of the materials that they're using be trashed on my property? Because that's basically where I'm coming from. I have a pile of crap that wasn't there a year ago, 4th of July, because I walked my dog up and down the mountain too. And now there's a big pile of a brush, two tire rims.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Two tire rims and a wheel. I have pictures, I took pictures of it. And orange burg, and that was not there prior to the 4th of July last year.
Could I just clarify, are, are you suggesting that these things are on your property?
Oh, they are. I believe after the survey, that's what, you had your place surveyed, there's, there's trash piled up on my property, yes. And I want to know, there will be no more materials put on my property if this pole barn does get erected. That's all I'm asking, because I'll be back, and it'll take more time and effort. So I don't know where they would place their materials that they're using to build it, and if there's any.
I believe she did it from a staging, I guess, or, or.
Materials and where they.
Probably knows it comes, you know, I don't want it kicked. It comes, you know, and they buy the brick holes, they bring the stack of metal, they throw two by four of the lumber or whatnot. So it will be deposited on the wallwork area within feet of both buildings, I would assume it's from your property.
So I appreciate, so obviously, if I could just clarify, has anything that was placed on your property been removed or?
No, I didn't touch it, because I couldn't possibly.
So there are, there are still items or debris or whatever that?
A photo, a kid showed me.
And your property butts up to his property?
It's right next to it, right here.
Is there any way you can print that out for the board?
Yes, yes.
Because like, we can't.
Well, have you ever spoken to the?
Yeah, I think I mentioned it, I'm not sure. It was, you know, a year ago.
So would it be possible if we shared with you the email address for the, the ZBA secretary, for you to email that to the secretary?
Because I don't believe that it was there a year ago, 4th of July.
But I mean, how many, how many times have you asked him to remove it?
Well, I wouldn't, because I'm not sure who put it there. I'm not accusing anyone.
Okay. You just want to make sure.
There would be.
Well, maybe when he.
Sir, just one second, I, I just want to allow.
Thank you. So my question begs itself, on the variance from his adjoining property to mine, with the driveway going up, what is the amount of feet that I'm allowed, please?
I believe you're allowed 25, if it's an R90.
So it's a, it's a side yard, so it would be, according to the bulk, scheduled 30.
How much, 30?
30 feet.
Okay, I thought it was 25.
That, that's for a structure, right?
For a minimum side yard.
Side yard.
Side yard.
A side yard.
Setback.
That would be to place a structure there, right?
Yeah, structure.
A structure would be, would have to be 30 feet from your property line. It would be, have to be 30, at least 30 feet into your neighbor's property.
Away.
Now, that's, that's not necessarily a driveway, right? Could a driveway be closer?
No, no, that, driveways have nothing to do with it, that's not a structure.
Right. So a driveway, could that be right next to the property line or?
It should, it should be at least three feet. It's like putting up a fence.
I don't know, that, but that's not your consideration at the moment, so.
Well, there is, is there run, you can inquire if there's runoff. Yeah.
That comes from the high areas of the applicant's property down to Ms. Rahilly's.
Well, it's spring-fed water that comes down.
Can you talk into the microphone?
Oh. It's spring-fed water that comes from his property down from, to my property. It's spring-fed water, and there's caverns up there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So if you wouldn't mind, please emailing the, the picture, that would be very, very much appreciated.
Appreciate that. I don't want to keep much more of your time, but what, what is your property designated as?
Ma'am, sorry.
Oh, I have to talk to the chairman. What is this property designated as? Homestead?
Residential rural.
Residential rural.
That's not a homestead.
I'm, I'm homestead. I'm, I'm residing at a homestead, is my personal.
Yes.
I wouldn't want to see anything materialized land on my property. That's what I'm really concerned about, because it's, it's my nest egg. I preserve trees and, and caretakers come to maintain, and we've cleared as well many trees on our own with the help of friends. And it's, it's really my bread and butter right now, where I live, and it's what I'm depending on to stay there for as long as I can without any trespasses of, you know, going on with dumping there or whatever materials might be in, in process being used for this pole barn.
And ma'am, did you? Sorry. Go ahead.
Are any of your concerns, are you concerned about the structure if there, if it was allowed? How would it look from your property? If it would hinder your view or anything like that? Is that part of your concern or? I'm concerned about that, because I'm kind of. I'm concerned about that because I'm kind of in a gnaw. I'm nestled in. Okay. And this pole barn would be bigger than my house. My house is maybe thirty-five hundred feet, like a bowling alley. This would be larger than my house, which would take away from, well, I'm asking a question here, chairman or the lawyer or Michelle, would that depreciate the value of my property with this pole barn? That's a question.
This board can't really answer that.
What was that?
It's not for their consideration, but what is for their consideration is how it's going to fit in with the rest of the community.
Right. So I wanted to invite you to share with us any thoughts you had about how that pole barn would impact the neighborhood from your perspective.
It would possibly drainage, one I'd be concerned about seriously, because, you know, if it's going to run off this height variance, which, you know, would take it probably more torrential down towards me. And drainage is a concern as well as the, I guess, the non-privacy I would have. I wouldn't have the privacy I have now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And also, if they're going to store vehicles or recreational goods, is there any possibly hazard materials, like is the oil changed, is the gas, you know, what's in these vehicles? I don't know what they carry, diesel, gas, would that be run off, too, to affect the drainage and groundwater?
In the car. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Is anyone else?
Yeah, I was going to say...
That's okay.
Please.
There is.
Sir, if you would just please state your name and address and...
Michael Mann, 10 Walker Road. I just was trying to figure out exactly where the barn is going to be because I see now it's a pretty large barn. But I know it's a pretty wooded piece of property, and I was wondering if he's, I think he said he was going to keep pretty much the buffer around it the way it is. And also, I wanted to know exactly about where it is because I didn't see, you know, no map or anything as to where exactly the barn would be, you know?
Let me...
And would there be another entrance going off it, or is he going to use his existing driveway?
Yeah, let me, oh, do you...
This one?
No, I'm going to show the... So sir, if you want to approach, I'll show you this map. So this is, this is the property, and so what he's proposing is to place a barn behind the house, up the hills. And I guess there's going to be another driveway leading up to, kind of branching off of the...
Oh, okay. So the entrance, what comes off of...
Same, same entrance.
Can we still use the same entrance, but then just make over another?
Another.
Okay.
Behind the house, up the hill.
Oh, okay. All right. No, that's fine.
Okay. Did you, did you want to make any comment about the pole barn from your perspective in terms of the character of the neighborhood or anything?
Yeah, I mean, I keep like woods by me, and it seems as if he wants to keep woods like by him, and, you know, I'd rather have something like that than another development that, like the one on the other side of 55 that I get water runoff. It's ridiculous, you know? I get water runoff from that, and, you know, I'd rather have a barn and still have, you know, which Mr. Stanky seems as if he wants to, you know, keep it the way it is now, and that's fine by me, you know, so...
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. So seeing no one else, motion to close public comment?
Why don't you keep it open?
Oh, keep public comment?
Yeah, why don't you make a motion to keep the public hearing open? And you had discussed earlier about possibly visiting the site.
Going, yeah.
So if you want to make a motion to keep the public comment or public hearing open, that will allow other neighbors to possibly weigh in. But not only that, you will also be able to comment about anything further that you find out from your visit.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to keep the hearing open.
Second.
Next meeting date, you know, we've got to come up with the next December 2nd.
To continue.
So make a motion to keep the public hearing open until the next ZBA meeting, which is December 2nd in 2025.
So motion to keep the public hearing open till the next meeting on December 2nd, 2025?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes now. Do you have any other suggestions? Do you want to make a motion? You can make a motion to do a site visit, okay? But I must caution you, if you guys go on this site visit, you can't talk about or deliberate outside the four walls of this particular room. So you can't talk about the application. You can ask questions, but you cannot deliberate or, you know, talk to each other about, you know, how you're going to go one way or another as far as, you know, making any decisions because that has to be done within this particular room based on the evidence that comes before this particular board, okay? So things that you learn outside of that, of course, you could bring in to your everyday observations, can always come in to this particular meeting room, and you can ask questions about it, okay? But I think it might be beneficial. I agree that it might be beneficial to the board to actually get a lay of the land.
Yeah.
Okay. So motion to make a site visit?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
All right.
All right, what you should probably do is get contact information from Mr. Stanky so that you're not going to be able to do this all together, so you're going to have to make...
Just make arrangements.
Yeah, make arrangements on your own. But no more than two of you can go at a time, all right? If you are going to do that.
So there you go.
Okay.
Do it that way, all right?
Okay. All right. So then I'll just close the meeting for now?
Yeah, make a motion to adjourn the...
Okay.
December 2nd.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, aye. Sorry.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Sir, if you wouldn't mind just approaching for a moment so we can just confirm contact information?
The motion has to be decided, so you didn't vote on it, so...
Oh, we, I think we did.
Was it unanimous?
Yes.
To close the meeting?
Yes.
So whose number is two?[1782.63]